Okay, good afternoon, everyone. The Planning Commission will come to order. And we have a few administrative things to go through since this is a formal meeting as well as a workshop. First, Julie, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Schwartz, absent. Commissioner Pujol.
Here.
Commissioner Lodge.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner Higgins, absent. Vice Chair Campanella.
Here.
Chair Thompson.
Here. Okay, at this point, if there's anybody in the audience that wants to speak on an item that isn't on the agenda today, in other words, not about the new zoning ordinance, now's the time, if anybody is interested. I don't have any speakers still. Gentlemen here would like to... Okay? You can bring the form up and hand it to Julie when you speak. Okay, well, maybe it's in here with the rest. Come on up ahead.
May I clarify?
This is items that are not on today's agenda, okay?
Can you hear me? Hear me?
Good.
It's unrelated, but I will applaud the workshop because I think there's been a lot of good work that's been done.
Okay.
But I'm here to speak in favor of an initiative that's currently been being worked out and there's a lot of work that's been done on already. It's called the Sustainable Living Research Initiative. And I believe it should be a goal for the commission and our community in the next year. So hopefully it'll get on the agenda for next year. But I'll get on my apple crate for a little bit. But I think we've gotten good at enacting new laws and regulations and ensuring necessary safeguards for environmental and human health and safety. Many of these laws are good ones and essential. However, over time, this process is stifled. Good projects is as much as bad ones. In the worst drought in state history, we made it illegal to recycle gray water from our kitchens and laundry rooms on-site. And we've allowed hundreds of thousands of gallons of rainwater to run off into the ocean, which will now presumably convert back into potable water at great expense and environmental cost. We built our entire community around the car, tying up prime real estate for parking our vehicles, which remain idle 99% of the time. I know that you guys did look into average unit density, but the densities...
...and provided fewer opportunities for affordable housing, forcing many young people, retirees and working poor to consider tough options or move out of our community. The letter goes on, but I don't want to...
You've got in your records, and you can take a look at it. But I think if we were to start over and look at development again, how would we approach it? And how would we design our communities? What kind of projects and partnerships would we look at? So I think we need research that's laid out in this initiative to begin to look at new technologies and methodologies that might be useful in the future and that are emerging through innovators and research institutions and engineers. So that's what the initiative is established to do. And I hope it'll be an option in the future as an overlay and then evaluate it on a case-by-case basis through a credible, established committee or commission. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Are you Ben?
I'm not Ben.
I'm Philip.
Which one were you on here? So I know which... You're Philip?
Philip Tan Coste.
Okay, gotcha.
And you got the full letter.
Right, and we do have your letter. Okay. Next you. We have a little technical difficulty. Pardon?
I guess we had a little problem here with the mic.
That's a public comment.
Ben Werner, were you going to speak on the...
The clarity I was asking for is whether the subject, which I'll speak about, which Philip also spoke about, which is the SLRI, should be attached to the agenda item of the new zoning ordinance or not. And apparently, it's my call. So in my opinion, my opinion does relate absolutely to the Enzo.
Okay, all right.
As do a few other folks on the subject.
Okay, fine. Anybody else who wants to speak on a non-agendized item? We'll close that and move to the workshop and turn it over to Mr. Cato.
Good afternoon, Chair Thompson and Planning Commissioners. We're here for Module One of the new zoning ordinance. And I just want to make a brief introduction because the baton has been passed as to the project manager. Beegularte was the project manager for this effort, and she was doing a great job, so great that we promoted her to become the senior planner for development review. You see her almost every week now. She has been replaced by Mark Aguilar, who's our new project manager, and I'll let him take it away.
Thank you, Danny. Mark Aguilar, project planner with the City of Santa Barbara. I'm joined today by Martha Miller, who's our consultant for the Enzo process. For anybody watching or online, there's information for this meeting at the city's Planning Commission webpage. And there's also additional background info and reference documents at the city's new zoning ordinance webpage. So this is the new zoning ordinance. The effort's continuing. The last time we visited the Planning Commission was in March for review of the issues and options paper. That summarized the project goals and major issues. So we're continuing now with Module One, Use Regulations. This is the first of three. This module will cover base zone purposes and use regulations, development standards for specific uses, and use classifications. The new zoning ordinance, the Enzo Joint Committee, reviewed this in May. For that meeting, staff identified a number of topics, seven or eight topics, for them to focus on while also being cognizant that they might have other issues to bring forward. This modification, or Module One that you have now, is a result of those comments and additional information revised by staff. So what we did is we opted to present the Planning Commission with a staff report which kind of mimicked what the joint committee saw, so you could see what the changes were and would follow the same pattern. The Enzo schedule is kind of, is on a two-year track. And so we'd like to remind you that if, in the discussions for this module or subsequent modules, certain zoning issues come up that maybe are going to be large and require more vetting and should be their own project, maybe that should not be part of the Enzo effort. Maybe that should be pulled out. So that's just something to consider as the discussion moves forward. So because we have some limited time, staff would recommend that the commission allow Ms. Miller to go through her entire presentation. Although if you have some questions, just to clarify, as we're moving along, please feel free to jump in and ask those, but we'd like to move through that first and then maybe hear what your comments are and where you would like to focus. So does the commission have any questions before we begin?
Okay, I don't see any. So yeah, we'll try to let your presentation go all the way through. And then if we have any questions to get clarification on anything in the presentation, we can ask at that time. Then I'm going to have the public hearing open, and we'll run the public hearing a little differently than we run our normal meetings in that, since this is a workshop. I'm going to allow people to ask the staff and the consultant questions directly, get clarification, so that we can have a little more interaction between people who have questions and the people who have the answers. So over to you. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. So with my presentation, I'll just quickly give an overview of the new zoning ordinance project, summary of the draft use regulations in Module One, review the key issues, and then I'll turn it back over to you for the discussion. But whenever we start out, I like to start by kind of reminding ourselves of why we're here and why the city started this project. And it was really to update the zoning ordinance, to be consistent with the general plan, to be modern, reflecting what's happening in the city today and where the city would like to go, provides that clear direction for decisions, and addresses some of the things that the city's been dealing with, particularly non-conforming uses and working to promote adaptive reuse of properties. Through this entire effort, the overall, you know, underlying objective is to, at the end of the day, have a zoning ordinance that's clear, concise, understandable, and easy to use and understand. So that's something that we're always thinking about as we're going forward. And as Mark summarized, we've really gone through the beginning phases of the project and the kind of research and the technical analysis, kind of what the big issues are moving forward. And now we're starting to get into the preliminary draft of the regulations, so starting to get into the details. And we are in Module One, which is the use regulations. We take the update in parts so that, because it's so much to take in and so much to work through, we break it down, in this case, into three parts, review those, and then we'll bring it all back together into a complete draft and review that again. So we'll review uses today. We'll be coming forward with Module Two, which will have development standards, and Module Three, which will have administrative provisions. Both of those go through the joint committee and community workshops. Then again, we bring it all together and have more workshops and meetings as well. So it's an ongoing, ongoing discussion. So Module One includes an introduction, the zone district purpose statements and use regulations. It also has the standards for specific uses, so any use that has some particular characteristics that get addressed wherever they're located throughout the city. Use classifications, which are basically the definitions of what each of the uses are. And then we include a use correspondence table, which shows what the city calls a certain use today, and then how it would be classified in the update, so you can do that translation. So the first part with the zone districts, the first thing is update of the zone names. There's no rezoning, but some of your zone names don't really provide any context for the character of the neighbor, the nature of that zone. For example, your E2 zone is a single-family zone with a 10,000-square-foot minimum lot size. There's no idea what the E or the 2 kind of relates to. So that would be proposed to be renamed as RS10, residential, single-family, a 10,000-square-foot minimum lot size. So just helping out the usability and the understanding. Each of the zone districts have purpose statements. And what the purpose statements do is explain kind of in general language what the intent of that zone is. And it really provides that connection between the city's land use policies in the general plan and then the zoning regulations that implement that. And that can help in administration, providing that basis for findings when you're wondering, well, what are we really trying to accomplish with these rules and regulations? Then each of the zone districts has, or, well, not in order of the paper, but kind of in order of understanding what the use classifications do, is group uses according to common function or physical characteristics, rather than what you have now is a very exhaustive list of kind of every use imaginable or people could think of. Invariably, people come up with new uses or new terms that you don't have specifically defined. So the approach is to have a little more broader use classifications so that you can see how a use functions or the characteristics of it and fit it into that broader, broader group. So each zone has a table which lays out the use classifications and then identifies if a use is allowed in that district, if it requires a conditional use permit, a performance standard permit lays out the use, and then what the permit level is. So these are provided in tables with cross-references to other applicable standards to help in that navigation of the document. It also groups some similar zones, so you can see the comparison between the zones and what is allowed in one zone and what the differences between the other kind of similar zones. The next piece is the standard for specific uses and activities. These are standards that apply to the use, no matter kind of what zone it's in, in addition to any other kind of requirements for it. So it's things such as the home occupations, the mobile food vendors, the automobile services, really the uses that have these unique things that need to be addressed with specific standards. So that's really a short overview of the contents of the module. The majority of the regulations are really a reorganization and a clarification of your existing standards. In the introduction to the module, it describes, you know, kind of what changes were made or what happens. And you'll see that most of it is really a carrying forward of existing standards. There are some areas of change, and these are the key issues for discussion that staff brought out with the joint committee meeting. And I'll go through kind of each one of those here. So the first one, and it's also what, each of these were the subject of the open house boards, so I'll be trying to summarize the comments that we received on each of these issues through the open house as I go through each one. So the first one is the industrial M1 zone, which your general plan includes a policy to preserve and encourage the long-term integrity of these uses in these areas. And some of the suggested or possible action items are to narrow the commercial uses, to protect industrial areas, to ensure that there's sufficient land for these industrial uses. Currently, though, that zone is the least restrictive and basically allows all uses except for residential. So the question posed to the joint committee was, should some of the allowances for general retail or office be eliminated in this zone, and if so, which ones? And there were, I would say, varying positions on this, from limiting all kinds of the commercial and office and retail uses to, you know, retaining the existing allowed uses. There were some suggestions to allow more non-industrial uses on lots, kind of around the periphery of the zone, where there's kind of that transition between commercially zone property and the industrial zone property. So staff, in your module, in your staff report, highlighted and read the types of uses that may be eliminated in that M1 zone. And we'd like the Planning Commission's thoughts on that. Some of the comments that we got through the open house was concerned with creating non-conformities and what that means for the markability of the property, what people can do in leasing their property, how that affects the existing uses there. Overall, some unintended consequences, the problems that that might create. Also, that office headquarters are important and that, you know, all businesses really require an office, the office component. The next issue item was neighborhood markets. And again, your general plan has some direction for this, to enable and ease the establishment of some limited neighborhood-serving commercial in mixed-use and residential areas. Currently, there are neighborhood markets that exist in your R2, R3, and R4 zones. No new markets are allowed. So what's there is legal non-conforming and can do some limited improvements under the non-conforming provisions. So there were regulations and allowances included in the draft regulations. And the questions kind of posed would, should neighborhood markets be allowed in single-family zones with a conditional use permit? And then allowed in other residential and commercial zones with a performance standard permit? Are the standards appropriate? Is the required level of permit appropriate? And really, should a conditional use permit be required for alcohol sales? And some of the feedback was that, you know, with these neighborhood markets, that some seating should be okay. The draft regulations had limited seating. The committee felt that it really should not be allowed in residential, single-unit zones. Alcohol sales don't necessitate a conditional use permit, that sometimes the alcohol sales are really part of what's needed to make the market viable. Some food preparation should be allowed. And then there were some different opinions on location requirements. So we included some draft regulations that required the markets to be located on corner lots to really limit the compatibility issues with surrounding properties. And then also require a distance, a separation, so you didn't get too many neighborhood markets in one place. There is some discussion on, and staff would like some direction on, should there be a distance limitation? Should they be allowed mid-block, or should they be limited to corner areas? The home occupation standards were also addressed because your general plan had some policies related to including standards for home occupations in residential zones. And this is really the intention, to provide viable live-work opportunities throughout the city. It's currently in allowed use, and what the draft regulations include are some operational and performance standards, along with a new zoning affidavit requirement, which basically is that recognition by the property owner that they need to operate in accordance with the rules and the regulations. So the questions were, you know, were these standards appropriate? And some of the comments were that, there were some limitations on beauty salons, barber, you know, barber stations, and lodging. And the idea was that a single-station hairstyling operation may be okay. Change the term lodging, that's really part of the vacation ordinance that you're dealing with, and that's a big issue. And then some language on commercial vehicle allowances and that you don't want the unintended consequences of actually encouraging commercial vehicle parking. So staff included some updates or some revisions in line with the committee's comments. What we heard comments through the workshop was, you know, the home occupations are okay as long as you're not creating additional vehicle trips. There was one client that there should be no, one comment that there should be no clients or employees. And then another comment that, you know, that actually can be okay as long as it's not impacting the residential area, and that it's a light touch. If I back up real quick, the comments through the workshop on the neighborhood markets was that they encourage that use. It's a good thing. It may be okay in single-family zones. And it's okay to reduce required parking, allow food preparation, and encourage these types of uses. Sorry about that. Mobile food vendors, currently, they are not allowed on private property. That's currently prohibited. And staff often gets kind of requests for those. You see them more and more occurring and taking place. And so the question was, should the new zoning standards allow for these food trucks? And what types of standards should be applied? The general feedback was supportive of it as a new use and looking at opportunities to, one of the issues is that sometimes the parking of the food trucks displaces existing parking. And looking for opportunities to limit that and allow some limited displacement of parking, but being sensitive to impacts. Some of the questions brought up through the workshop is, you know, can they be in the same location every day? If they're really acting as permanent food availability, then that's unfair competition with established restaurants. Also, kind of with the food trucks, but also expanding to other types of vendors, whether it's grocers or just any other kind of mobile vendor beyond just food. And then questions of how many per site? Is there a minimum parking size where these, parking lot size where these would be allowed? So there's just some concerns over compatibility. With automobile service stations, this is one where, in your current ordinance, they're treated differently depending on which zone you're in. In the manufacturing zones, there's no requirement for a conditional use permit, but there's a whole list of development standards that apply. In your commercial zones, you do have to have a conditional use permit, but there's much less standards that apply. And what ends up happening is often the standards that would apply in the manufacturing zone end up getting attached as conditions of approval in the other zone. So the proposal was to combine the regulations, have them apply to all service stations, and then, rather than require a conditional use permit, have the service stations allowed with a performance standard permit. And the joint committee was in general agreement with that. Some of the comments through the workshop was that agree that there should not be a conditional use permit required, but also the question of why even require a performance standard permit? If you have all the standards in place and they're required by ordinance, that staff is equipped to make that determination without having to go through that higher level of And then finally, community and market gardens, and your general plan had some direction on this, to, you know, look at where community gardens could be used and encourage some private development of those gardens. So we included two types of these uses. One was a community garden, which would not allow sales of the produce. Anything grown on-site would be consumed by those who grew it. And then market gardens, which do allow some onsite sales. And these had development standards applied with them. And I think that the joint committee was pretty supportive with some modification of the development standards, removing the size restriction and addressing nuances or possible compatibility issues, particularly in residential areas. And so staff made those updates. The comments in, from the workshop were to not allow them in light manufacturing zones because of the limited availability of land. And then also support it, another comment was supported of the market gardens and allowing onsite sales, that that could be a real kind of benefit. So that concludes my quick summary overview, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do any of the commissioners have clarification questions for staff at this Commissioner Pujol.
Maybe I'll call this clarification. But if you could just remind us, you know, the non-conformities any of this draft changes make is going to be very important to all of us. Right now, I believe we're putting blinders on to those and addressing that later. Could you describe when we would kind of roll that back in and address how these newer non-conformities that would be created would be addressed? When do we discuss that?
Module Two.
Okay. So first, we get through the uses and get the draft of the uses. And then in Module Two, then there's a continued conversation. Okay, now, these are the non-conformities that could potentially be created by these changes, and let's address how we're going to deal with those.
Right. But we would also like to hear, even in this discussion, what your concerns with the non-conforming uses would be. For example, if you say, well, you know, I would like to not allow any more new offices in M1, but the ones that are there should be able to do this, that, and the other. So we do want to hear that now so that we can be cognizant.
Okay, thank you.
Any others? Okay, we'll open the public testimony at this point, not in any particular order, just the order that I received, the slips. Ben Werner.
Okay, now it's time for my comment. So I'm Ben Werner. I am a co-director of SAMA Group here in Santa Barbara. And SAMA Group essentially conceived of and is developing and is promoting this thing called the Sustainable Living Research Initiative, which your commission has received some information on and perhaps had some discussions with us on over the last month or so. And I'd like to think that it's really good timing that the city is developing its new zoning ordinance while we are at a moderately advanced stage in developing the Sustainable Living Research Initiative or SLRI. By moderately advanced, I mean, by that I mean that the city of Galita did incorporate the SLRI into their new draft zoning ordinance, specifically in agriculture and not in other zones. However, the core concepts of the SLRI in zoning, I think, could apply very well in pretty much any zone. And the core concepts really are two. One, performance-based zoning, performance that would allow an applicant to apply innovation and creativity to achieve the desired results or the desired impacts of the underlying zoning better than in prescriptive zoning. And the other core piece of the SLRI, which is just as critical, is accountability to the actual performance of the project after it's developed, which is accomplished through partnerships with our local research and education institutions like UCSB. partnerships with our local research and education institutions like UCSB, Brand School, Environmental Studies, and so forth. And what this gives the city is an actual window into seeing how the project is actually performing with the latitude and flexibility was granted to achieve that. And also requires that the project actually achieve its intended performance with punitive results if it doesn't. So, there are a number of potential positive impacts that the SLRI can provide for our community, including such things as you heard from the earlier speaker, a public speaker on water use efficiency and so forth. I just want to focus on a couple, which I think are right at the heart of some of the most challenging issues that the city is facing in its urban zones, especially density and parking. We all know that, that the need to create affordable housing is something that we need to address, and yet, the flexibility that's required to do that, such as reduce parking requirements, increase density, often comes with a lot of potential negative impacts, such as, you know, additional vehicles on the street, additional traffic, additional burdens on the infrastructure such as water and power and so forth with that increased density. With the performance-based and oversight or accountability structure of the SLRI, we can actually achieve the positive impact such as affordable housing while eliminating or mitigating the negative impacts such as increased vehicle parking, traffic, and infrastructure burdens. So, I just wanted to briefly tie in this potentially innovative concept with some of the language in your existing draft, NZO. And I'm just picking a couple of zones that I, that are applicable to the examples I'm giving, such as in residential zones, the purpose of residential zones and quote-unquote are to provide full range of housing options to suit the spectrum of individual lifestyles and space needs and ensure continued availability of the range of housing opportunities necessary to meet the needs of all segments of the community consistent with the general plan. And then under commercial and office zones, to provide the orderly, well-planned, and balanced development of commercial, office, and residential areas, encourage a mix of uses that promote, that promotes convenience, economic vitality, fiscal stability, and a pleasant quality of life, and promote pedestrian and transit-oriented mixed-use areas at appropriate locations. So, at least as I'm personally envisioning, we can achieve this intent with the flexibility and performance accountability of SLRI in a way that the current generally prescriptive zoning approach that this city and most municipalities currently have are working with. So, in summary, my request to your commission would be to allow us to continue to develop this for the new zoning ordinance and for your commission to direct staff to further develop the draft, which may not ultimately be an overlay as we proposed it. It may, as I'm discovering in our conversations earlier today, might be a performance standard permit or something else. This is something that we would need to, I think, really ask critical questions about. And so, what we as Sama Group would like to do is to continue our ongoing efforts in working with stakeholders in the community, engage with staff, and really make this not only something that would be theoretically wonderful, but will actually be used by the community. And launch Santa Barbara forward into really re-identifying itself as the leader in sustainability, both economically and socio-economically, with environmentally and socio-economically, excuse me. So, thank you very much for your consideration of that.
Okay. Thank you. Trish Allen?
Hi. Good afternoon. My name is Trish Allen with Suzanne Elidge, planning and permitting. And this afternoon, I'm here to learn and talk to you all about the zoning ordinance changes and discussions, but also to submit comment on behalf of the Wright family. And I did submit a letter a day or two ago that I believe got distributed via email. Specifically, the Wrights own a property located at 301 East Yananali Street. It is in the Cabrillo Plaza specific plan area, but it also has an underlying zone of M1. And I didn't mention the, or we didn't mention this in the letter, but it's also in the coastal zone. So, I understand from talking with staff this afternoon that the coastal zone, I know about the LCP updates, that's kind of happening separately. But I did want to put forth the Wright's concern and request really to maintain flexibility in the M1 zone. It's very important. This particular site sort of looks and appears as an island of M1 with different land use zones around it, and I did point that out and put a map in the letter. With respect to that property, we don't feel that manufacturing or industrial use is appropriate or compatible with that neighborhood that's changing with the, kind of on the fringe of the funk zone, if you will. And in fact, we have a pre-application that's in the city processed for a retail and market use at that site. So, again, we just want to put forth our request to maintain flexibility in the M1 zone. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Richard Monk?
I'm Richard Monk. I represent Marburg Industries. Marburg leases or owns 20 properties in the M1 Zone District. These are used in conjunction with Marburg's operations, including their corporate yard, recycle facility, buyback center, hazardous waste collection, liquid waste, and yard. Four of these properties are also occupied in part by their corporate offices, and also three other properties have various offices in conjunction with the uses. My comments may not even be consistent with what the intention is of the proposed ordinance, but it appears to be at least ambiguous, and I think it's worthy of comment. Marburg appreciates staff's concern that there be sufficient land available in the city for the industrial uses and expansion of those uses, and certainly endorses that. But at the same time, to the extent the ordinance is seeking to make these office headquarters uses non-conforming, we have very serious concerns about that. Marburg has made a very significant financial investment in developing these properties and would not want them to be converted to non-conforming uses with respect to the office component thereof because of the vagaries that occur when you're a non-conforming use. If you have a catastrophic loss, it certainly impinges on your ability to rebuild. Also, there may be a need for further development or expansion of the office uses. So, we would hope that we maintain or that the ordinance maintains the flexibility in the M1 Zone District that allows these types of uses in conjunction with the principal M1-type use. These are not freestanding offices or leased out to any other operator. They're used by Marburg in conjunction with their operations. So, those are my comments, and I had discussions with staff during the workshop, and I think it was consensus, or at least a feeling, that this was not the intent. But then again, there are unintended consequences that can oftentimes occur, and so, we'd like clarity to be injected into the ordinance during the drafting. Thank you.
Thank you. Fay Cox?
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I'm Fay Cox. I'm co-director of Sama Group with Ben Werner. And there are many issues that the SLRI addresses, but I want to touch on two today that I know are in all of our minds and hearts these days. One is, we do have better ways to be carrying for the, carrying for water. And currently, we cannot really apply those ways. The SLRI will open up that territory for us to take better care of our water and also to research and develop other ways of taking care of our water. And this is not something we need to do next year or the year after, we need to do it now. And the other thing is that a city cannot be healthy when the average rent for a 300-square-foot apartment is $1,500, $1,600, and 10 or 12 people are lining up for that space to live in it. This is another urgent issue that the SLRI will open up territory to research in a very transparent way, engaging the best minds and the best expertise in our region to apply to it. And it will give Santa Barbara a wonderful way to lead the way for other cities in our state. Thank you.
Thank you. Jack Lucifari? Did I get that correct? Pardon me if I didn't pronounce it right.
Valiant effort. I'm going to do it all, I see the kids doing these days, which is read off my cellphone, my comments.
You're not going to send us all a text message, are you? Because we have, we have our phones turned off.
Chair and Commissioners, my name is Jack Lucifari. I own and operate Our Town Property Management here in Santa Barbara. I have a background in socially responsible investment and sustainable development. I'm active in our local social venture and social enterprise communities. I have undergraduate and graduate degrees from UCSB, and I freaking love this town. I chose to settle here after college because I figured that if an idea can't be made a reality in this area, then it probably isn't a very good idea. I don't claim to yet know a lot about how your body works, but I do know that the SLRI overlay is fundamentally a very good idea. Maybe the draft you see before you needs some tightening up, and maybe it needs some language change. But the SLRI overlay is an important regulatory innovation that acknowledges the reality of where we as a society sit today and opens up possibilities to build the society that we need to become. So, if we can't make this idea a reality, then I'm going to have to rethink a lot of things, and I'm getting too old for that. I'm going to save you guys recounting all the data points that are scary and the dire trend lines. I'm not Catholic, but I just want to quote the Pope from his recent encyclical. This is a direct quote. He said, "I urgently appeal, then, for a new dialogue about how we are shaping the future of our planet. Regrettably, many efforts to seek concrete solutions to the environmental crisis have proved ineffective, not only because of powerful opposition, but also because of a more general lack of interest, nonchalant resignation, or blind confidence in technical solutions. We require a new and universal solidarity with future generations." The viability of our planet, not only, it's the only habitat that we have yet figured out how to live on, and it's rapidly being compromised. Business as usual is no longer a reasonable option. It is too late for incremental improvement in design and technology. We need to figure out new and scalable ways to build our buildings, deal with our excrement, feed our families, provide opportunities to young people, and dignity to our elders. We need to fundamentally redesign our communities. We can't do any of the above without testing. We can't do any of the above things without taking some calculated risks. And those of us in this room today have the power to create processes by which to analyze and authorize those calculated risks. The intention of the SLRI overlay is to create conditions for our community to innovate and to improve, and therefore, hopefully, be habitable for our grandchildren. Please tell me how I can help you work on the SLRI overlay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And our final speaker that I have a slip for is Michael Sensupici. If anybody else wants to speak, fill out one of the green slips.
Good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Michel Sensupice. I am an architect here in Santa Barbara. I am speaking in support of the zoning overlay that the Sustainable Living Research Initiative is proposing to incorporate into the current zoning ordinance of the city of Santa Barbara. The Sustainable Living Research Initiative proposes to work out the nuts and bolts of a zoning overlay with the Planning Department of the city of Santa Barbara through a Sustainable Living Research Initiative committee. I strongly urge the Planning Department of the city of Santa Barbara to accept the invitation of the Sustainable Living Research Initiative to form such a committee that will include local and non-local individuals and organizations whose work focuses on sustainability. The writing of an overlay to the current, to the current zoning ordinance that addresses the issue of sustainability could make our community of Santa Barbara a model of sustainability. Thank you for considering this.
Thank you. Evan Thomas?
I'm just a recent graduate from UC Santa Barbara. I recently became aware of the SLRI. And what I would like to ask you is, what I would implore you to think about is what reasons there would be why allowing the SLRI to be incorporated into the new zoning code could be a detriment. It is an experiment. It is a minimum of, or at this point, unless reinstated later, it's a two-year experiment that will take place on specific areas which your commission or the property owners within those areas want to happen. It will not affect areas outside of the, outside of the overlay district itself, and allowing it would be as, I won't get on to the benefits of why the SLRI is necessary, but I will say that I don't, I do not see how a two-year experiment could cause harm beyond in the time that it would be enacted. Please allow this experiment to take place. If it fails, it fails, and whatever, whatever projects were allowed under its term could be removed or adjusted to be conforming with existing zoning regulations. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And we don't have any other speaker slips, so seem to have a lot of interest in the Sustainable Living Initiative. Rather than having a large debate about it today, unless there's objection from the commission, I would like to ask that the staff and the NZO subcommittee look into this and take, take it under advisement as to whether it makes sense and in what format to include in the new zoning ordinance, and then at the appropriate time, bring it back to us. Okay, I don't see any objections. And Mark, is that appropriate?
That'll be fine, Mr. Check.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, as a member of the Subcommittee on the NZO, I think that's a good way to go. I do want to add, I spoke to Ms. Gallardi earlier, and because I was concerned that this was, looked like spot zoning because it was too applied of particular properties, and she suggested that, that it might be appropriate. And I was thinking as I was reading about it, that CUP process would be appropriate for something like this. But again, that's fine with me for the committee to look at it.
Yeah, it gives it a little bit more time for both staff and the Subcommittee to look at all of the ramifications and flesh out what is the appropriate language and way forward to see if it should be implemented, and if it should be, how it would be implemented. I don't think we have the time to do all of that today, so to give it its due, it would be appropriate to spend more time at the Subcommittee level. Commissioner Jordan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Campanella and I had the opportunity to actually visit with Ben at a, just a neighborhood outreach event a couple of weeks ago, too. And I would echo your action also as one of the committee members. I think my, my concern is with the effort by the SRLI people is that they're already a year and a half plus probably behind the committee process of input, and it'll be difficult to go stop today and talk about that. But I, I'd certainly be willing to do the work as a committee member, too, to look for opportunities. You know, much of what I see in your document is, I think, is already being done, so I kind of have the feeling that what you want is more being done in those particular areas. And that, I think, is really important to hash out at the, at the committee and the staff level and to how, how your, your goals translate into tangible language that will actually fit in the bureaucratic zoning document. And I think that'll be the challenge, but I think there's a lot of good stuff in, I think there's a lot of good stuff we do already that you want us to do. I think there's probably better stuff that we could do better, and at the same time, I think you guys need to get more involved with the nuts and bolts process of how this gets done, too. Thanks.
Commissioner Campanella?
Yeah, I, I want to echo, I'm in favor of the idea of more intensive review and discussion at the, at the Subcommittee level. I would suggest one thing for staff to look at, and picking up what Commissioner Jordan said, we have a number of implementation items within the general plan on climate change and our climate change plans. Implementation items, some of which are quoted as we go through. Implementation items, some of which are quoted as we go through our staff report. I would suggest maybe that the group get a little more familiarity with what's already in our elements and general plan for possible implementation, and maybe try to earmark or benchmark whether you feel you're accomplishing something or you're in the spirit at a particular implementation. So you're using what we've already established, maybe as a base, and then if you want some other suggestions, go from there. But I think that would be a good place for you to start. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, I'd like to ask that the Commissioners bring up any questions they have for the staff and the consultant, and then when we complete the questions, that you go through your discussion items list that you said you wanted some feedback on, put the slide up, we'll discuss each slide in turn, get whatever feedback that you want. Okay, any questions in general for the staff or consultants? Commissioner Pujol?
And perhaps a question for the Chair also in here. The questions that I have are actually go by topic. So do you want to address all those upfront, or just as we go through the topics, bring them up at that point?
Well, I think we're going to go through the specific portions of the topics that the staff is looking for feedback on, which was highlighted in the report. So if you have questions on other items in the draft document, I'd say get them out now.
That are not part of the topics. I'll hold my questions then, thanks.
Get them out now if you have other questions.
No, that's fine. I'll minor within the topic.
Commissioner Campanella?
Would suggest that as, and appreciate having the boards up for public comment that were done as part of the workshop, that if there are some comments that you're holding that were not addressed by public speakers, that maybe as we go down each topic, you might relate what people brought up. That would be helpful as well. Thank you.
Commissioner Jordan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the question I would have would be on Ms. Lodge's question on nonconformities and how you explained that'll be handled in the second module, so, and also some concerns you heard out here today. So as we go through this process, and we sort of leave the first module, I'm assuming just for a period of time, and then we talk about consequences of nonconformities and what that means to you, or staff, or us, and that we don't like that. What's the process that allows you to come backwards to Module One to readdress the consequences of nonconformities or work on that dynamic?
Well, we'll be tracking that and taking notes and going back. When we put everything together in the complete draft, that's when we go back and make sure we've resolved all the things that, you know, were affected by later comments and revisions. So we don't stop thinking about or taking comments on the uses and the use regulations. We're always cognizant of that and making changes so that it all kind of fits in.
So just now, bureaucratically, it's easy to want to put something to bed and move on. It's always really much more difficult to go back and change once you've kind of got an agreement, but in this case, maybe some of those are naive agreement with the concept. So I guess my two cents there is just would be, I think that will be important that, you know, if you get halfway through this and you see something that's going sideways from what you, from a direction you thought it was, that there'll still be plenty of opportunity to put an opinion out there and help move it back to that conversation.
Absolutely. And we'll be doing that again at the end, where, okay, now that we've seen everything, do we still feel kind of that same way? What I don't want to happen, though, is that people hold on to feedback or comments at this point until then, because we want to, it's an ongoing discussion, but we need to get the potential issues, concerns, and everything out so that as we move forward, we can be cognizant of it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I'd like to echo that, too. It'd be better to get everything out earlier rather than later. We don't want to get to the endpoint where we have a draft ordinance and then have a whole bunch of items come up that could have been fleshed out earlier and cause all sorts of delays at the endpoint. That's not the time to bring things up. Okay, unless there's any other questions, could you put up your areas of issues that you want feedback on? And we'll start, we'll start with Commissioner Jordan's end, and...
Well, I've had a shot at this already, but, and it's interesting, I think even among the three of us who are sitting there, there's a difference of opinion.
A wide difference.
A wide difference of opinion on what should happen here. And, you know, to me, when you listen to Mr. Campanella, you're going to hear somebody who gets right down in the wonkiness of it. To me, it's more of a bigger picture thing on, you know, are we really too late anyhow down in that area? Do we have, on both hands, do we have entrenched uses that are not necessarily what you'd put there again if you did it? Are you allowing other uses which are in line with property owners and development and mixed use or whatever else that are part of the city's plan? And I think what's important to me in this particular zone is just agree on something and then make sure you focus the actions on what that agreement is. It seems to me up till this time, it's kind of been a gray area of jumping around and kind of like the wild, wild west, and the horse has already left the barn. I, you know, I continue to maintain that I can argue one day that, I can argue, I can sit with Mr. Campanella one day and say, "Don't tighten it up down there," then I can sit with Ms. Lodge the next day and say, "No, make sure we maintain what's down there." And at the same time, my overall worry is just, I don't know that that's necessarily in 50 years the right place for manufacturing, even per se commercial. That zone just seems to be changing daily, and, but that if we're going to do something else down there, that we need to have an alternative for where that type of work goes. And I continue to mention airport, and I want to drag an airport person in here one day and just strap them down and have a conversation about Hollister Avenue and why, why, what, just repeatedly ask my 10-year-old questions, "Why, why, why can't this be done?" But I think that'll be the challenge with the city. Whatever the result is, is what are we also going to do to handle the consequence of anything that is being displaced right now or will be displaced with whatever our decision is? And that's far more important to me than trying to predict what market forces are going to actually do down there, because I don't think 20 years ago, people envisioned what's down there now, and 20 years from now, somebody will think of something different. So that's not much of an answer or direction, but I'm going to maintain that middle of the road and listen to everybody else. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Lodge?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I looked at it initially from the perspective of, the goal down there is to maintain areas where there actually is space for M1 uses. And so many of the things on there, like retail, I didn't know that kennels, for kennels, this was the only zone that they were allowed in, so obviously it would still leave that. But, and I was aware that it's going to create a lot of nonconforming uses if we go this route, but it's become more complex than when I, you know, I'm looking at it. And I concur with the observations that Commissioner Jordan made, that, you know, it's very hard to predict what's going to happen and what the needs will be. But somehow, I think, well, we need some sort of middle ground where there is still some space for M1 use. And I don't think that it can be all just tossed out to the airport. But this is something that obviously needs more work, at least for me.
Okay, Commissioner Pujol?
Thank you. Okay, first of all, a couple of questions. If we could have just a very brief summary of the problem we are currently seeing with and of the reduction in availability of industrial space. I share with you that I think that there is a problem. We need to protect the ability to have thriving industrial, at least a light industrial base in the city, because otherwise we lose one of those vibrant sectors that make our city a whole workable, livable city. But I would like to hear from you what you feel the severity of that problem is that led to asking us to take a look at the elimination of some of the more commercial or office uses that have moved in. That's one question I have for you. And then the second question is this. I believe that regardless of uses that, from this long list of allowable uses that we already have, may be eliminated, at the same time, we are, I believe it's the case, that we are not saying that ancillary uses are eliminated, although I don't believe you've really, from the materials I have, made a strong case for what types of ancillary uses are we considering? Like, for example, if there is an office headquarters that's necessary and integral to the industrial use, is that an ancillary use? Is our employee services, like, you know, the availability of nearby lunchroom cafeterias or delis and things like that, and is that an ancillary use? Does an ancillary use have to be part of the main use on the site, or can it be a separate parcel that's ancillary to the uses in the area? Those kind of things. Those are the two questions that I would like to start with. And then I do have a couple of comments and follow-up questions on some of the items that, at this point in time, the committee and the staff have proposed for potential change, which I believe are the ones that show up in red, starting on page 19 of the long litany of available uses that may be either reduced in scope or eliminated.
So, Mr. Cato, do you want to answer Commissioner Pujol's questions now, or?
Yes, I do.
Save it for later? Okay.
So...
Don't hurt yourself answering the question.
So to answer the first question, we prepared this map, and I think it was in the packet. I think we distributed it at least to the joint committee members. And it pretty much illustrates what we're talking about, right? The red uses are commercial uses, the gray uses are industrial uses, and I think blue is industrial as well, right?
Institutional.
Institutional, sorry. Okay, so, so the gray, so the gray areas are the areas that are used for industrial uses, and of the vast majority, I would say more than half of it, the M1 zone, which is kind of below the black line coming down Haley Street, is, less than half of it is actually being used for industrial uses. What appears to be happening is these are kind of lower rent districts, and then uses that, offices uses can go, and it's a little bit cheaper rent, and then the rent goes up, and then suddenly, suddenly the industrial uses can't afford to be in there anymore. So then it's a spiral that, it's a sort of upward rent spiral whereby the uses that we want in our city, industrial uses, can't afford to be there anymore, and they move and they go to Ventura or Oxnard or any, any of a number of different places. So the idea behind General Plan Policy LG8, which is an adopted policy, was to try to preserve areas that this could, so that in the future, there will be areas to be allowed, where, I mean, where there's actually feasible areas where hopefully the rent is still cheap enough to allow industrial uses. That was your first question, right? Did that sufficiently answer your first question?
Yes.
So the second question was ancillary uses, right? And, so this is a work in progress, right? We haven't, we haven't actually got to that stage yet. We, we're still trying to get some feedback from the decision-makers on whether we should go down this path. And if we do go down this path, we would definitely have more conversations about what would ancillary uses be. Now, I'm, on my initial thoughts about that are that we would allow ancillary uses such as headquarters of Marburg, right? Offices, the types of offices that the staff were talking about and the joint committee were talking about were standalone office buildings that have nothing to do with industrial uses, period, right? Those are the types, or retail uses, that don't have anything to do with industrial uses, right? We're not talking, we weren't at least envisioning the headquarters for Marburg. We're not, we weren't envisioning that the industrial use had to have its office in some other zone, right? I mean, industrial uses need offices, too, right? Because to take orders or whatever. We weren't thinking of those types of things. Now, one of the things that you brought up for ancillary was like restaurants or snack shops, like standalone. We hadn't, at least I hadn't thought of it that way, as that being an ancillary use. You know, in my view, from the M1 zone, Milple Street isn't very far away, you know, Haley Street's not very far away, that you could go get something to eat, and it's not that big a deal. Plus, there's a bunch of food trucks around, you know?
Or will be.
And we might, there might even be more after this effort is done, right? So I hadn't, we hadn't really, we hadn't envisioned that so much, but it's all kind of, it's a little bit up in the air right now. So, sorry, I can't be more precise, but that's what, that's sort of our thinking.
No, that's perfect. That's perfect, thank you. So I'm going now to this list that starts on page 19, and I, just some initial thoughts, most of which I'm still sorting out myself. It's good to hear that everybody else is still working that out, too. But I read through...
Wait a minute. 19 is residential uses.
Pardon me? Oh, I'm sorry, okay. The manufacturing, well, I think it's land use manufacturing zones, right? The page 19, that's part of the draft itself.
Okay.
That's what I have.
Starts out saying resident, okay.
But those would be residential uses allowed in manufacturing, I believe is.
Okay.
Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay, okay. Not going to go one by one, because there, as you mentioned, it allows just about everything, but focusing on some of the ones that I just made note about. There's, I guess there's a proposal to remove community gardens, and there's three types of agricultural items kind of listed in here. Agriculture, commercial, actual commercial agriculture, then community gardens and market gardens, and some you propose to remove and some you don't. I really don't see any reason to remove any of those, because they're oftentimes interim use. I may be misspeaking in that at the very end of the whole list, there's a category called interim use, and I have no idea what that is. So, but just to say for now, I see no reason for those kind of low-intensity, you know, seasonal, year-to-year kind of uses on a vacant lot or a vacant portion of a built-out lot. I don't see why we would need to remove any of those unless there was some sort of concern with hazardous materials runoff from nearby manufacturing uses or something like that, which is a little bit beyond me at the moment to opine on. I agree with assemblies being removed, daycare centers being removed, uses that are sensitive to noise particularly being removed. And I guess agriculture, was one of the ones that was going to be removed. They see it on the next page there. In terms of, on page 20, there's a whole section of commercial uses relating to animal care, sales, and services. I agree with most of them. There are a couple of those uses that are actually pretty noisy uses, if anybody's ever dealt with, you know, community issues related to a kennel in your neighborhood. So I don't know where else a kennel would go. So I think, pardon?
They're only allowed in the M1 zone, so that's probably one of them.
Yeah, and I think you need to allow them for somewhere, and since it's a noisy use, I would recommend keeping that one. I don't understand why automated teller machines would go. I understand the bank. I think that's a good idea, that that could be eliminated, but I think you can have automated teller machines and a... teller machines in a headquarters office for convenience for employees. Basically, I think anything that's convenience to the employees that work there, we should carefully consider before removing them. That's one whole category that I would say we should look through just for that kind of activity without going through those one by one. But I do agree that banks and financial institutions and major office professional uses could be eliminated from that zone. And I guess those would be my primary comments. And research and development, because I think that can go elsewhere, that's like an office park kind of thing, could be, I think, eliminated. So, oh, I had one more comment on this whole section, just from, you know, this initial work through. And that is, in the area of transportation, communication, and utility uses, which is on page 22. And I see that it's allowed here, that's fine. But what my question is, is it also allowed in other zone districts?
No.
That's a problem for me. So actually, this is a reverse comment for you, because I...
Oh, wait a minute, sorry, which...
You have the light fleet-based services and, not the truck terminals, that's fine, but the light fleet-based services, which I believe, from reading the descriptions, means a bus station, maybe it means an Uber office. I don't know what it means exactly, but it would, but light fleet, to me, would mean, you know, something more like a bus station or a train station.
No, that's, it's, hang on, let me get to that section.
It's page 62.
Let me just put it this way. Where it deals with passenger services, I think we should look at allowing those, at least by conditional use permit, in some other zones where necessary and not reducing it only to a manufacturing zone. That's my concern there, where they're passenger-based services.
Yeah, we get that. And that, I think, I think the more appropriate land use classification is transportation, passenger terminals. I think that's more what you're talking about. Light fleet-based is like a yard for UPS trucks or taxis or, you know, that kind of thing.
Maybe you can double-check your use descriptions, because I think I saw, anyway, I thought maybe a bus terminal might have been part of that.
If it is, it's a mistake, so we'll check it out.
Okay, okay. And I'll make just one final comment back to the beginning on agriculture here. In your use descriptions, I know this, it comes up in my mind because we're looking at the agricultural uses in this list, but just to point out here, I think that I will have follow-up comments on how you categorize agriculture in general as a commercial use. You know, agriculture is really a different animal than plain, there's commercial agriculture, there's market garden agriculture, there's backyard agriculture, there's community garden agriculture. And I think it really deserves its own category. I don't think it's all a commercial system. It's a little different than that. So I'll be making more comments on that later. I don't exactly know where to put them into this format, but I wanted to bring that to your attention now. Okay, so those are my comments on the manufacturing.
Thank you. Commissioner Campanella?
Thank you. Let's see, I guess, starting off, I'm going to refer to the map that we all received. Initially, at our last meeting, we received, and I really appreciate staff doing this, received a map that showed the land use categories of the prior classification, M1 zone. And at the meeting, we requested to take a look also at the CM, that's adjacent to it, in order to maybe perhaps to get a fuller picture of what the uses are right next to each other. So, appreciate seeing the square footages of land that are available. If you look at the M1, the largest use within the zone, 41.7%, is industrial and car service. Within the CM zone, the second largest use is industrial and car service, 770,000 square feet already existing. So there appears to be sufficient industrial space by category. I don't know what percentage car service is of industrial, whether that's 10% or 80%, I don't know. But I don't know if car service is, it's needed, but I don't know if really, maybe we can get a breakdown at some point. I don't know if that's a critical need, it may be, but if we're trying to preserve industrial businesses, is it really car service that has the same level of priority? Don't know. So that's, I don't think we'll find that out today. In looking at the map of the M1 area, aside from established uses like the Home Improvement Center, and across the street's going to be, what is it, ReadyClick or other website-based firms across from the Home Improvement Center, office buildings that are already built on Calle Cizcavés and Montecito Street, and then institutions, there is a lot of industrial and car service, except maybe where you sprinkle single-family residences and multifamily residences. So there appears to be a good need, which is ultimately why I didn't think of the necessity of removing uses from an M1 zone, which, due to the cheap land that they're at now, they're going to look for cheaper land if they're replaced. And that cheap land, I think a good portion of it would be in the CM zone. The CM zone is where we want to have our multifamily and mixed-use housing. So I would try to make us aware of potentially the unintended consequences of pushing uses from M1 to CM and limiting the amount of land that we have actually to redevelop for the housing. That would be a concern. Secondly, I think this area, starting to eliminate things or make it more restrictive, I don't know if that was the intent of when we started. I think we really need to look at this area long-term and maybe not just take out things currently. It's evolved over the years. M1 is not going to see a lot of three-story buildings built, they're going to stay pretty much as one-story, no matter what the use. The fact that a commercial business goes into a former industrial space doesn't mean that industrial space can't go back in there at some point when there's demand for that type of product or somebody needs to utilize the space. Long-term, I think this is really our future, these two areas, because this is really where I think we have to look forward and see, what do we really want to develop? What are we going to look like going forward? How sustainable are we going to be? Don't want to preclude things from occurring like community choice aggregate on, that we're going to pay a feasibility for, to study on how we can get our own renewable energy in the city and participate with the rest of the South Coast municipalities. Also, purchase power agreements for solar, like we're doing at the airport. We have a lot of great programs on cities' properties that are giving a good example of what to convert to within the rest of the city on, let's say, private pieces of property. So I am hesitant to start eliminating uses, except maybe one that I would look at, and I think I confirmed this today, that hotels and lodging are also allowed in these two zones, correct? Going forward. So we saw the impact that they could have on single-family neighborhoods this week, and how the city council spoke about that and wanted to preserve it. And we also have areas where we can do multifamily housing or more industrial development. To be competing for pieces of property with hotels that can generate $6,000 to $9,000 a month for a 400-square-foot unit, now that there's going to be a continuing need for hotels, and they will continue in the future. If we're going to look at something, I think, where do we want the hotels maybe to be located? Rather randomly throughout these two areas. So I think I'd put that on the list to discuss as maybe the first thing to look at if we're going to try to restrict uses, is that a thing we look at? Other than that, I think it's premature to start taking things out until we maybe explore it a little bit more on a subcommittee basis, on what we really intend to see here as we go forward in the future, and also get input from the Sustainability Group of whether some of these areas are where they can use some models for the programs that they're talking about. Then I'll go back to where this discussion started at subcommittee. If we were going to restrict uses, as illustrated on the map, if you look at the M1 area over by Milpus Street, you would see there's a lot of parcels that run parallel to Milpus and back up to lots that are in the general plan and housing element designated potentially for AUD overlay density. My point initially was that we should look at less intensive industrial use along the borders, so that you're not going to be in conflict with residential. As stated in the text, you can also get access to the back of these properties and not have to go through Milpus Street. You could do parking, you could do maybe some office or something less intensive that would not be in conflict with the bordering residential. Same thing is true where you see Richardson and Reddick Street, where at mid-block there, or quarter-block, you're going to have uses that may not be complementary to mixed use that we're looking at getting in the CM zone. So if we were going to do restrictions, I recommend not on the border areas, create a buffer like we do with residential by coming up with office commercial and office residential and other buffers that we create in the city in order not to impact residential development, in this case, multifamily residential development. So that's where I come up with my thoughts of leave it alone, but if we are going to do something, be cautious on where it interfaces with potential residential development. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comment back, Danny?
Yeah, can I, Commissioner Campanella, can I ask you a question? I think you said that if we were to restrict the types of uses, like commercial, industrial, oh, no, oh, never mind.
Commercial and retail.
Yeah, and then those would be displaced to CM zone, you said, right? Yeah, okay, no, I get it now, sorry, I didn't...
So, you're not going to go to State Street. I mean, unless you're Sonos or maybe somebody that can afford it. But most likely, the people that need the economics of the rents and locations are going to go to the next cheapest spot, otherwise they're going to leave. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. I make a few comments to your questions that are up on the screen here. First, I refer to it as the MI zone. I think you said that we were changing from M1 to we were going to have the new zone be more indicative of what it's intended to mean. And I would ask a question if, along the lines of Commissioner Campanella, if we restrict the uses, are we going to turn away viable uses while keeping properties unused, waiting for the permitted use? In other words, we've got to be careful we don't paint ourselves in a corner by restricting the use of the zone. In other words, let the market determine what would be appropriate in there within reason. And I would strongly emphasize, and going along with what you said before, Danny, that offices that are an integral part of an industrial use are, have to be permitted in the zone. They can't be grandfathered or non-conforming or anything like that. If it's an integral part of the industrial use, then they're part of the industrial use. As you said, most businesses have some kind of an office. Those are my comments on the, on that question. Unless there's any other comments, we could, Commissioner Lodge.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm, you know, I'm looking at this map, I'm looking at it there. One of the staff people indicate where the boundary is between the CM and M1, as we're currently discussing it. That leaves a very small part of the city that is, allows M1 uses. And then, on the other hand, this is the one zone that is the least restrictive. The only thing it doesn't allow is residential. So I still would like to see some of these uses eliminated. I agree with you completely, Mr. Chair, about the office uses related to the industrial uses. That certainly makes sense to allow those. But again, I still think we need to preserve the space for industrial uses in the city, and what that area is quite small.
Okay, did you guys get enough feedback on that item before we move along to the other seven items that you have?
Yeah, if I can just, real, generally, there may be some uses that it may be somewhat obvious to eliminate, the daycare, there might be some of the low-hanging fruit that way. There's some that may be clear to keep, the kennels, one example. Then there's the middle area, which I think is office, retail, food, which, within that, there's two pieces that ancillary, and with that to better define that and clarify. And then there's the freestanding, which I think is the real difficult piece to work through, and then also look at opportunities for the transition side of it. So, the next part was the neighborhood, oh, sorry.
Excuse me.
Yeah, would you, I know Commissioner Pujol spoke about it, but the other one I put on the list to look at is research and development. I mean, that's a pretty broad item, and if we're not researching and developing, we're not growing. I mean, so I think to selectively say it should go somewhere else, I think I would look at that one maybe as a standalone item. I think that's really a key to what the group is talking about, and also future jobs and future businesses in the city.
Chair, yeah. Chair Thompson, in response to that, there are several items on this list that, this sort of depends on exactly what's being proposed, right? I'm looking at instructional services, public facilities, and research and development. And to me, it would depend on exactly what is being proposed, right? If you're, if I'm opening a welding school, we'd probably want that in the M1 zone, right? But if I'm, but if I'm opening a typing school, we probably wouldn't. So I think we might need to differentiate amongst some of these issues, public facilities as well. If it's the corporate yard of the city, yeah, we probably want that in the M1 zone. But if it's this office building, we probably don't. And similarly for R&amp;D, some R&amp;D is just a bunch of computers in a room, and that's an office, we probably don't want that. But some is building stuff, you know? And so we'd probably want that kind. So I think we need to differentiate on some of these uses, what, by what's, by the actual type of thing that's going on. So we'll look at that as well.
Okay. Next item on your list was neighborhood markets.
And that starts on page 47.
Right. So there's some of the questions up there, and this time we'll start with Commissioner Pujol's side of the table.
Okay, thank you. Neighborhood markets mean corner, the idea, concept of corner markets, right? One of the questions was, should they be limited to corners? That got me thinking, because I really don't know the real theory or origin behind that, except that in traditional neighborhood planning, they were on the corners. What I do think is, and you mentioned it earlier in your presentation, it does, I think, assist in the question of compatibility when they're on the corners, because those tend to be more of the transitional areas in terms of uses anyway. And that makes sense to me. I read the notes of the subcommittee meetings, and I think there's good argument in following that discussion about not requiring the CUP for the alcohol sales. Although I have a question about that. Does that mean you can drink alcohol on premises or sell the alcohol?
Well, originally, it was just sell, because the draft regulations didn't allow for any onsite consumption of anything. Through discussion with the committee, there was thought that, you know, some limited food service and deli would be appropriate, so that would be a discussion item for you.
Well, and I think you hit the key point there, it's a matter of scale. These things need to be very small-scale. The list of existing markets, the inventory that you provided was also very helpful, and it looks like to me with the 1,500-square-foot number you've chosen, that pretty much matches what we've got. I think there are a few of them that might have been over, but I had a question about that, too. A lot of times the devil's in the detail, we're dealing with the zoning ordinance after all, and so it comes down to that. When you say 1,500 square feet, does that mean of market area? Does that include the storage? Does that include space for outdoor tables? Or is that 1,500? Or is that 1,500 square feet, then plus you can have storage and plus you can have the outdoor, I mean, how did you envision that?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Pujol, that was the total square footage, so it could be parsed up by deli and storage and retail space or whatever.
Right now, I don't think there's any outdoor tables, and if we're going to allow them, then all of those numbers kind of move up from our inventory, right?
If outdoor tables really, probably wouldn't be considered square footage.
Okay, okay. So I think that that's shaping up, that section to me seems like it's shaping up pretty well. There was a question about what about mid-block markets? I think we need to take a little more care where they're mid-block because of just the calm residential feel, I think, in that case, but there might be some exceptions to that, and maybe those could be dealt with through a CUP perhaps if there's nothing much in the area. And I also question the 500 feet, it kind of makes sense, I mean, it's a number, it's about the length of a block, I suppose, but if you're on an intersection, does that mean if you've got four corner lots, basically only one of them could then have the corner market and not the others? Do we have a lot of intersections? I'm thinking of, say, close to where I live, at Mission and Chapala or Mission and De Lavina. It's also a mixture of zoning, so these corner markets that we're proposing, are those corner markets in residential zoned or corner markets in multiple family zones? Could you explain that part?
So they would be allowed in, right now in here, they would be allowed in all zones except single-family. So you could do a neighborhood market in a commercial zone.
So the limitation of 500 feet would be a limitation in all zones?
Right, for a neighborhood market. That's not to say you couldn't do a retail store, but you could, the neighborhood market would have different allowances, notably reduced parking requirements.
Okay.
So you could still do a retail or a restaurant, but you would be subject to the development standards for that. You wouldn't qualify as a neighborhood market.
I see, I see, okay. So if it was in a transition zone, you could have one really small one with the reduced parking requirements, pedestrian-oriented, let's say.
Yeah.
But then another one could come in within that 500 feet, but it would need to meet parking requirements or whatnot, and maybe it would be in a different zone, it would kind of work out that way anyway. Okay, so that kind of makes sense to me. I suppose would be somewhat in the minority because I do believe that there are circumstances where a corner market in a single-family zone would be very helpful. Maybe the difference isn't, the distance isn't 500 feet, maybe it's, I don't know, quarter-mile or the same way you would look at how far you have to walk to a bus stop, for example, some such thing as that. I do think there is great need, and it does reduce automobile trips if you can walk and get a half gallon of milk somewhere from your house. So I would be open to looking at corner markets in residential zones with maybe some higher standards or distance requirements, yeah.
Chair Thompson.
Right.
Commissioner Pujol, so we originally proposed that they be allowed in the single-family zones. The joint committee felt like, basically that in single-family zones, there's not enough density to support a neighborhood market where people would walk to it, right? The great thing about the multifamily zones is there's a lot of apartments, there's a lot of density, so there's more likelihood that people would walk, and that's why we wouldn't require any parking. In the single-family zones, the likelihood is, seems greater that people would drive to it, and then suddenly you have like a, not necessarily maybe a traffic issue, but a potential parking issue. And that's, as I recall, the major reason that the committee wasn't going that direction.
I can appreciate that point of view, my point of view is different, that one of the goals of our plan is higher level of walkability, and there are plenty of 7,000 square foot lots with single-family homes where, I mean, with that same argument, you wouldn't take the bus either, but we're trying to create a community where you can have those options and choices. And one of them is also to be able to walk and buy a half gallon of milk or a carton of eggs, and I think quarter-mile is reasonable for a bus. I'd say quarter-mile is reasonable for a corner market, too. There's one last item I wanted to, I don't know if you've thought about this, but in addition to maybe a limited number of tables in front, I think that the ability to kind of, like the green grocer kind of option where you can maybe put a few crates of your fruits and vegetables right in front of your store window, but maybe not inside vending machines, no, but you know, if you, like, maybe it's only a two-foot area in front of your store for fresh fruits or vegetables, something like that, I think also would be a good thing.
Commissioner Campanella.
Thank you. I really don't have any comments, I think, further comments, I think everything that we discussed was down here. I did make the comment on, you know, allowing one at any corner, I understand the one on an intersection corner, I understand the comment about mid-blocks, but, so that's about the only comment I made on this, and I'm fine with the rest of it, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Jordan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Pretty much the same, most of mine have been fleshed out. Mid-block versus corner, I guess, just a further comment on that, I think I wouldn't be adverse to anything mid-block. I'd like, I think I could see the prohibition against mid-block as long as there was an easy way to consider mid-block, not have to jump through the hoops of a CUP or something like that. If there was another easier way to put that in play and look at it on its merits. Still supportive of outdoor seating, still supportive of food prep and dining, I think scale is one of the things thought of since that time, and I haven't seen it in here, too, I think hours of operation for the dining and the beverage part of it, so that, say, you would have longer hours of operation for retail, which is our emphasis, and you would have particularly shorter, in the evening, hours of operation for dining and onsite consumption of food and beverage. Not in the single-family zones, I'm still okay with that. And does this, I don't remember talking about this, would this contemplate a single-family residence, well, or a multifamily residence, or a single-family residence in a multifamily zone and a market in the same building? You know, like you would see overseas, a shop run by the owner of the property building, if that happened to fall in the right zone?
There actually is one on Mitchell-Treena and Chino.
Little brown, oh no, here somewhere else, okay.
Yeah, that's a market with a, I don't, I think it's attached, we just did a project on it in addition.
So I guess, I guess my point is, if that would happen, I think that's really good. I mean, you see those all over the world, it's evident that it's, you know, it's really evident that that's a part of the neighborhood because the guy's, the person, the family's living there at the same time is running a business, and I think that's, it'd be something that, if it would work, I think would be a real great thing to happen.
Thank you, Commissioner Lodge.
I'm okay, oh, sorry. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm okay with what's down here, and I still feel quite strongly that they would be inappropriate, and probably as a practical matter, nobody would want to put in a quarter grocery store in the single-family zones because they wouldn't, there just wouldn't be the foot traffic to support it. And I was just, this is a kind of a side question, but the outdoor seating allowed in the front setback, I was trying to think, except for the quarter, the mid-block store in the, Mitchell-Treena on the east side, I can't think of any that have set, front setbacks, of any of the existing ones.
I thought the Guadalajara Market on the west side had outdoor seating right out front, that might be in the setback, I'm not positive.
But they shouldn't be, sidewalks in the residential areas are not like they are on State Street where there's really room for them to use part of the sidewalk.
Oh, oh no, I think I understand what you're saying. So what this is meant to say, what we mean it to mean, is that if you're building a setback from the sidewalk, you know, because all these residential zones do have front setbacks, so let's say you were building a brand-new one and you built it to meet the setback requirements, then you could have seating in the front setback.
Okay, well, you know, that would be fine. I don't have any problem with that. And I don't think the CUP should be needed for alcohol use. I guess those are my comments, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Briefly, I don't have a problem with allowing neighborhood markets in the single-family zone. From a market standpoint, you know, economics, I'm not sure anybody would want to establish a market in a single-family zone because they've got to look at whether they're going to get enough business, but I don't see that we need to disallow it. And the proposed standards, they seem to be reasonable, the size you have there, the hours of operation, unless we hear back from people in the community that think that the size would be better enlarged a little bit, I can't imagine making it much smaller and still be a viable market. The required levels it permits, I think is appropriate, and I also don't think a CUP should be required for alcohol sales. We already have ABC licenses required, and in fact, in a market like this, I would imagine the license would be not to be consumed onsite, it would be, I think they call it off-sales. So I don't think the CUP provides any additional level of oversight in that regard. So unless there's any other feedback, we'll move along to the next item, which, on your list, which was home occupation standards. Any general comments do you have? Okay, Commissioner Jordan, why don't you start out there?
I don't have anything to add, I think I'm pretty good with what's being presented. We did do that little vacation rental thing the other night, though, didn't we? Yeah, I thought so, yeah.
Commissioner Lodge.
Same as Commissioner.
My comments are similar to hers, the same as Commissioner Jordan.
Okay, Commissioner Pujol.
I do have comments. Two questions to start with, however. Currently, home occupations are allowed, I believe, this is what I, this is my question, what exactly is allowed, and I don't think you need a permit for it, or you just, it's part of your residential use, how does that work right now?
Do you want to answer? Okay, so the only place that home occupations are even mentioned in our current zoning ordinance is in the definition of home occupation. And it lists a bunch of standards, actually, most of which have been incorporated into what you see in front of you now. And then it also incorporates a list of prohibited uses, similar that are prohibited here. The way we administer it is that we, I mean, we sort of don't, we have a, it's a complaint basis. If someone complains about someone has this home business and it's really bothering me, we'll go investigate and then we'll make sure that, well, we'll determine whether or not it meets the definition of home occupation, and if it does, then it's not a violation, and if it doesn't, then we start an enforcement action against them to have them curtail whatever activity that is beyond the scope of what is allowed right now. But there is ambiguity and uncertainty in the way that the ordinance is written, you know, and we, so what we've tried to do here is to address some of those. For example, the existing ordinance is very clear that you're not allowed to have any employees, so that's pretty easy to enforce, but it doesn't say whether you're allowed to have clients come to your house or not. So we've taken a stance that generally, you know, take the piano teacher idea, that it's okay to have people come into your house to take piano lessons, or if you're an architect and you have your home office there and your clients come, you know, we've said that's pretty much okay, as long as it doesn't get out of hand, and we have had some enforcement cases where it has been a little bit out of hand, and we've had to work on that. You know, another standard is that you can't have any specialized equipment, that's not normally part of housekeeping. I remember a particular enforcement case where we had a guy who was silk screening in his house, and he had a special rig for doing all the silk screening, and we said that's not allowed because that's a specialized piece of equipment that's not generally found in houses. So just trying to say that we're trying to make it a little bit more clear, the affidavit is a new thing because now, instead of just kind of being out there on a complaint basis, people would come to us and they would fill out a form saying, yes, I understand all these standards, I will abide by them, and then we have it in the file, and then it becomes actually a bit easier to enforce later when we go out, we get a complaint, we go out and inspect, and we go, well, you're not abiding by the affidavit that you signed.
So that would be kind of like a buyer beware almost kind of thing, but you'd come in, you'd sign the affidavit, it's not a permit, it's an acknowledgement that you know the rules.
Correct.
Is that what that is?
Yes.
Okay, that makes sense, that's fine. Here's a couple of questions, though. So right now, it says no employees, I get that, makes sense, but it also says no employees or independent contractors, so what if you have a bookkeeper that comes in part-time to do your books, or a computer person that comes in to, I don't know, you have a lot of difficult computer programs, so somebody comes in once a week to, I don't know what, back up your computer or something like that, is that an independent contractor? You couldn't have that?
Well, that is an independent contractor, but that's providing a service to you, that's not somebody that you're employing as part of your business.
It's not part of your business, it's a service to your business.
But it's not an employee of your business, you know, you have the pool guy coming over, you know, to your home to service your home where you live, or you have, you know, maybe you're at home and you have your accountant come over, but you don't have a business, it's just your accountant who's coming over.
Okay, even though your accountant is coming over for something that you do as a home occupation?
I don't know about that.
Right, he's not.
Your piano tuner.
Right.
I don't know.
But they're not acting as an employee of.
Right, you say employee or independent contractor.
Right, because some people have, they employ people as independent contractors, and they're still, maybe they're eight hours a day, you know, they're integral in running the business.
Well, that's something I think you should make clear, because I don't, I think that would make a lot of people nervous. The other one is, the other question I have is on the very next one, onsite client contact. I understand wanting to limit the customers and not have a whole lot of them there at the same time, but exactly what is a client? So say you're the piano teacher, right? You're the piano teacher, you've got a private lesson for, say, child, and then the next child is there waiting, what if you have a recital day and, like, there's three or four of them all there at once? Is that a violation of, I mean, they're clients, right, but it's, or what if, to bring it home to something that could happen to me, you're a consultant and you have a client come over for a meeting, the client brings the husband and, I don't know, somebody else involved, is that a violation? Are those two clients, or is that one client because it's one project?
Well, we actually struggle with that, it would be difficult to enforce in any case, but we're just essentially inserting this in here to have this very dialogue about how, you know, what is that number? What is the line? How many is too many? How many at one time? How many per day? You know, we're open to those questions that you're asking.
Or what if you're tax season and you're a CPA, and you have people lined up for their little appointments, you know, but they go. I think we need to work on that, those two, a little bit more, I think it's just fine-tuning, but in general, I think the provisions are fine.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Campanella. Okay, no comments. I'd make a few brief comments. The issue about the single station for haircutting and styling, I don't have a problem with. And you're going to work on the term lodging, you're not going to make commission. And you're going to work on the term lodging, you're not going to make Commissioner Lodge have to move out of her house. The issue about commercial vehicles, you know, you said remove the reference to commercial vehicles, but there's a big variety of vehicles that could be considered commercial vehicles. You could have a couple of subcompact cars with logos on the door, and that's not going to bother the residential area at all, but if you had two big four-ton panel trucks, it's going to make a big difference. So, I'm not sure that just automatically saying no commercial vehicles, because some might be able to be allowed and not bother the neighborhood at all, so you might want to think about that a little bit more. That's the only ones I had that haven't been brought up. Commissioner Pujol?
Thank you, I'm glad that you brought that one up, because I would like to add to, to me, the commercial vehicles parked on-site aren't necessarily the problem if they're parked legally on the premises. Where it can be a problem is where you have a lineup of commercial vehicles parked on the street in front of the home occupation, because, you know, that really does give a different feel, and with logos on the side, to me, that's more the problem, not the ones that are on the premises.
Okay. Did that provide enough for you? Okay, we'll move on to mobile food vendors. Next item, I think we just started with Commissioner Jordan, we'll start with Commissioner Pujol this time.
Okay, mobile food vendors, my understanding is we are only addressing today, or at least our focus is the, on private property vendors. And maybe this is a bit of a silly question, because I don't know the definition of food vendor or food truck, per se, but that doesn't mean, I mean, if somebody were, if it was a drink vendor, that would be fine, right, I mean, food includes drinks and beverages and cooked and un, cooked, I mean, there's a variety of things, right? I think in general, the, at least my experience in the past has been that getting the health permit is the most difficult part of allowing these vendors. I don't know if it's different to get a health permit for something on the street versus something on private property, but I think that, it sounds like maybe you have, but I think it would be important to know what the regulations are from county health about what they will allow in the first place, because that could limit our choices in what we can allow. And so, I had a couple of these questions. It seems like the, this is geared to motorized vehicles, I guess, you know, typical kind of truck with a roll-up door, or something like that is probably what is envisioned, but why is it that it can't be a cart? I think you say no carts. So, that's one of my questions. And then the other one is electrical hookups. I just returned this morning, actually, from a little vacation in Hawaii, and I noticed on North Shore, in Oahu, they have a lot of these food trucks. All of them have, like, taped electrical lines to circuits, and so, is that what you would expect on, for these as well, or are they completely self-contained?
We would expect these to be completely self-contained, and we wouldn't want cords or, you know, taped down running across driveways or the sidewalk or the property. We think that's probably a safety hazard.
Okay, that kind of makes sense to me. And then what about the, why does it have to be a motorized vehicle and not a cart?
Well, the first thing that came up is not a concern of the city, but in general, a lot of times what communities are concerned with are, you know, I think of the popsicle pushcart sales through different areas, and just the, I guess, perception that the desire is to have the, you know, the bigger operations and the, you know, the larger food truck facilities versus, you know, kind of the smaller-scale pushcarts in places.
And I would also add that, you know, if you visualize the pushcarts, that's something that's going to be going down the sidewalk, whereas, you know, with the, a truck or a bus, you know, that's going to be on the street driving to the next location. So, there's kind of an active distinction there.
I guess I don't really understand that, I'd have to understand that a little bit better, because maybe you tow it off, I don't know, maybe it's a bicycle and it's in a bike lane. I just think it's sort of a very thin argument there, and I'd like to know more about why a pushcart wouldn't be allowed if it's on private, if it's on private property, and also, I'm assuming, is this only food, or can this be flowers as well?
Right now, it's just food. It could be, the definition could be expanded to be mobile vendors, rather than mobile food vendors, but right now, the way that it's written, it's just food. And the pushcart versus a more, you know, quote-unquote, permanent mobile food vendor in a truck, it's really up to the city, it's not a yes-or-no thing, it's what...
Well, I would be open to that, only because I don't see a reason to regulate something if there's really not a good reason to do it, and I'm not hearing, I just don't see the reason to exclude them specifically, which I think you do now, and also, I would be open to the idea of flowers as well.
Chair Thompson?
Mr. Gatto?
So, the pushcarts, so there's a specific ordinance of the city, it's not in the zoning ordinance, it's Chapter 5, and it's called, it's the peddler ordinance, right? And the way that it works with mobile food vendors is we've kind of extended that to be, to be a peddler as well, but the peddlers, as defined, I don't remember exactly what it says, but basically, people go from place to place, offering services, just like these pushcarts, and those are already specifically not allowed, right, they're prohibited by the city, and we're, and what we're trying to do is take a little piece of that, carve out a piece for the mobile food vendors, and we, at least, see them to be a little bit more innocuous, because they're not, I mean, even though they drive from place to place, it's not, you know, they drive to a place and they park for a few hours, and then, you know, they go, they, instead of walking around the neighborhood, so, I mean, that's where we're coming from, and maybe Scott's got more on the peddler ordinance.
Before you do just a minute, just want to clarify something, I mean, you're talking about a permit for specific locations on private property, right? We would know where they're going to be, they can't randomly move about onto different sites without knowing where they're going to be, right? And you'd get permitted for a certain address or something.
Correct, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Chair, the only thing I was going to add regarding the distinction between a mobile food vendor and a pushcart, is that there is an element of self-selection, the barrier, the financial barrier to entry with a mobile food vendor, that the standalone, self-contained vehicle versus a cart, it gives you a little greater assurance that the rest of the health code compliance is occurring as well. It's unlikely someone would go to the trouble of purchasing a food vehicle, a full truck, I mean, I think all of us are aware of the kind of quintessential step van that's turned into these kinds of vehicles. Whereas, a pushcart, relatively low barrier of entry, you see them going around town as it is today, I almost guarantee you that they don't have a health permit, in fact, in some cases, you can just see that, a health violation just by driving by them, they have a bucket of lukewarm water with corn sitting in it, it's just, I mean, so, that, you know, that's just one quick example of how a pushcart lends itself to a circumstance that you wouldn't want to foster, whereas, the mobile food vending truck, just by the nature of the financial barrier to entry, makes it less likely.
So, perhaps then it's an enforcement issue, potential for monitoring and enforcement with health codes and whatnot, that kind of makes some sense, I suppose, on that one, thanks.
Commissioner Caponella?
Yeah, just so I'm clear, in paragraph B, the term trailer is used twice. Allowed is a vehicle with a trailer, and unallowed is a trailer, what's maybe a distinction there, or am I missing the obvious?
So, the intended distinction was that the vehicle with a trailer would be okay, a trailer just on its own without the vehicle would not.
So, if somebody left a trailer off and drove away, that would not be allowed?
Right.
Okay, but a trailer or a pizza oven that's holed at the back of a vehicle, that's okay, because it's part of the operation?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Jordan?
So, what popped up on one of those pages there was an addition for something called an affidavit. Let's have, so, maybe walk me back through what our prior conversation was on either a, some type of permit or an affidavit for these things, how we're envisioning this?
Very similar to, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Jordan, very similar to the home occupation, it's basically, here are the rules, you know, here's what you're allowed to do, here's the timeframes, and, you know, apart from that, we wouldn't regulate you, but then, you know, we've discussed if you needed to have, if you wanted to have a food truck for a longer duration, or multiple trucks at one time, then maybe it's not just an affidavit, maybe it's another permit.
So, if it's a party, you'd be a permit, if it's a home improvement center and the burger bus, that might be an affidavit if he wants it to come once every two weeks, kind of thing?
That's kind of what we're thinking, yeah.
Okay. All right, then, I was part of the original playing with this, too, so, I don't have any issue with, I haven't heard anybody else has any issues with parking spot displacement, the, in the setbacks, as long, and I think there is some language in there, not, it doesn't impede other parking or pedestrians either on the private property or the public right-of-way, I use, continues home improvement center where he backs right in there at the center there, I know he probably takes out a parking space or two, and I know he's next to the sidewalk, but not on the sidewalk, so he's certainly in the setback, and I'm sure Figaro Mountains in one of the setbacks, too, when they have somebody in there, too. So, I, my overall, just two cents on this, is I want to be, I want to be encouraging to this type of use, I think that's kind of the modern template in certain areas in town right now, to not have a kitchen, which is, they have less space, maybe it's a mixed-use thing with an art gallery or some, or even, heaven forbid, wine tasting room might be down there somewhere, but the availability to bring in food, I think, is both beneficial to them and beneficial to me as a consumer, and I want to make sure that, or my two cents would be that they, this is as easy as possible while making, while at least having some type of guidelines or restraints that they agree to. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Lodge?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I can say yes to both of the questions up there.
Okay, my comments are, when I first read this section, mobile food vendors on private property, the immediate picture I had in my mind was the food truck that goes around the construction sites, and I didn't know they were not allowed on private property. Obviously, if you have in a construction site and you pull a food truck into the driveway where they're building a house, I guess that was not allowed, that was illegal, but it makes sense to do. But I also, in the course of the discussion, get the impression that you're talking about maybe that, but plus something else, in which case, if someone was going to have a regular return to a private property location, they would have to get some sort of approval to do it, as opposed to the mobile vendor that just sees that there's a construction going on over there, and for the period of construction, they stop at lunchtime to provide hamburgers to the work crew. So, are they different, or you see them being handled the same?
We would see them being handled the same, but there is a whole new class of gourmet food trucks, right?
Right.
It's not just here, all over the place, and what we're finding with those, like the burger bus or Georgia's barbecue or whatever, is they kind of set up these, they make their rounds, every day they're in a different place, and, but every, like, every day of the week, they're in the same spot for three hours or whatever, so we're just trying to make it so that that's, that can be legal.
Right, and I concur with that, being legal, and your draft of the standards appears to be appropriate from my reading of it, so I don't have a big problem with that. Any others? No one else? So, moving on to your next item would be temporary use regulations, automobile service stations.
Right, with the joint committee, we did discuss temporary use regulations, but since then, I think the consensus was, we want, staff wanted to spend a little more time on that before bringing it forward, so you'll see that.
Moving to automobile service stations, and your questions are up there, Commissioner Jordan, you want to start it out?
So, does, does the proposed requirements resolve or lessen the burden we just went through on Correo Street, with the guy having, a guy been there a long time, all of a sudden has a mini, I mean, not even all of a sudden, just has a mini-mart, but he has to get a CUP?
Yes.
Okay.
But I'm not sure how much, I mean, because what we propose is that that kind of gas station would not require a CUP, but a PSP, a performance standard permit, we've had some discussions among staff of, well, if a gas station wants to add a mini-market, I mean, a retail use isn't allowed use in most of these zones, why does it need a CUP? So, there's still the possibility of making it even less restrictive than it is now by saying, if you're adding a use that's already allowed in the zone, then you don't need to, you don't need to add this, you don't need a PSP or a CUP, as long as you're, as long as you're still abiding by all those standards that would apply now across the board, to all gas stations. So, that's, I mean, there's, it's going to be easier, but it could be even easier if we want it to be.
Well, I guess my, I really just, I really just don't know what scope that's really applying to, as you go down through the sentences, and when I drive by gas stations, every one of them has a retail operation in there, you know, and so, it's just, and every one of them might have a vending machine out in front of it, too, you know, unless they've been a recent beneficiary of some type of development action, but it just seems like you could apply this anywhere you look.
Well, so, we make a distinction between the gas station that has a little tiny eight-by-ten room where they have some candy bars and a refrigerator for sodas, versus like your normal AM PM where it's quite a bigger, a bigger gas station, that's considered a mini-market, and when, the way it works right now, if you have the first type of gas station I talked about, and you want to add a mini-market, that requires a CUP or a CUP amendment, and I think what we would, what we are proposing is that, first of all, we make it a PSP instead of a CUP for everything, and all the standards be the same, whether you need a CUP, whatever approval process you need, the standards would be the same, and then the thing I suggested was, maybe you don't need a PSP for those zones where you would need one, if you're just adding a use that's already allowed in that zone.
I like that, I like that explanation right there. I keep looking at the other gas station further towards downtown from the one we just talked about, it's an old Union 76, it's some horrible shade of brown paint right now, and so, as you...
On Bath Street?
On Correo.
Correo and Bath?
Yeah, Correo and, near the fire station.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so, one block, one, no, one block west, but might be Bath, might be De La Vina.
Bath.
Bath, okay, so, but as you drive by it, you can... So, but as you drive by it, you can clearly see in the, in the business part of the operation, from the street, driving by on the other side of the street, you can clearly see refrigerator, you know, stand-up coolers and sodas in there, and retail operation, and I just, you know, I just, I feel a little bad about being such a hard case on the guy down the street, while still, the guy down, his neighbor down another block is maybe doing the same thing, and I think it neither needs to be, I either think it needs to be properly taken care of, or we need to make it as easy as possible and just live with it, one or the other. Seems like we're straddling in this, if nobody complains, we won't do anything about it, kind of zone. So, that's my comments.
Okay, Commissioner Lodge.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I concur with the agreements, the comments that Mr. Jordan made, however, the, the one on Correo and Castillo, which came through here for the permit, the ending, end result is going to be a much better-looking facility, and I would, I would like to see that, that somehow, well, that could be part of the PSP, you know, the landscaping and all those other things.
Yeah, that's true, but remember that these would also have to go through the separate design review process, whether it's ABR, HLC, and we normally, you know, the PSP is kind of a land use issue, and we would, we would try not to get too much of the aesthetics into the land use approval, and let the design boards handle that. And that would, I mean, that would still be a requirement going forward.
Okay, okay. Okay, well, then, I can, I can agree with the, say yes to the question.
Ms. Pujo.
The difference between adding a mini mart to a gas station and just allowing a small market in a zone that allows it, is there any operational difference that, is this really something without a distinction in your mind, in terms of the way they operate?
Well, no, and actually, one of the other cleanups or changes is that service stations, the definition includes mini marts. So I think maybe what you distinct, or try to distinguish now, you wouldn't need to make that distinction.
Okay, okay, great. So, from my perspective, I think you're definitely going in the right direction downshifting, and I agree with Commissioners Jordan and Lodge, and particularly Commissioner Lodge's statement about landscaping and design. So if we can get landscaping and design and allow the uses that are allowed by right in that zone district, then I think whatever is the typical process that would get it, that design review would be satisfactory for me. So maybe that would mean no PSP and design review and a counter or staff-level permit. I certainly think that a CUP is an onerous requirement, you know, taking a look at the example of the case that the commission saw a short while ago.
Commissioner Cappella.
Question for staff, with a PSP, depending on the nature and size of the mart within the service station, staff would still be evaluating sufficient parking, traffic flows to the pump, et cetera. So that's, that's correct.
Yes, that's correct.
So those would be enforced, whether it was a CUP or a PSP. Thank you.
Okay, I would make one observation, that the term automobile service stations in the modern world is a little bit of a misnomer, because there's very little service done on these so-called service stations. So with the interest of trying to bring the code up to date, you might want to think of a new title there, that doesn't, because when you say automobile service, nowadays, it tends to bring to mind an automobile repair business, because no longer do the so-called service stations change the oil, change tires, do all that, they just sit there and take your money while you pump the gas. So you might want to think, think about that. But as far as where do we put them and what should be allowed, I agree with the points that were made about, if we can put the standards in the ordinance, I don't think either a CUP or a PSP should be required. If they comply with the standards and we have it in the ordinance, then they get design review, as any other commercial project would get, and beyond that, there shouldn't need to be further review. That's just where I'm coming from.
Great.
Okay. Last item you had on your question list was community and market gardens. So Commissioner Pujo, would you like to start off comments on that?
Well, I think it's really wonderful that we're adding those in to our zoning ordinance. I mentioned earlier about definitions of agriculture. I mean, these are agricultural uses, they're just not commercial agricultural uses. So I'm going to go back to one of my very first comments, is I think that we should have the definition of agriculture, which can be commercial or non-commercial, and these are smaller versions of that type of agriculture. And also, I don't think that we should limit these uses in certain areas, treating it as though it's a long-term, 20, 40, 60-year venture, and that would be great if we have that. But I also think that if there's, you know, a vacant lot, or a portion of a vacant lot, we should be allowing these things anywhere we can, really. So I'm, I'm all for, for those provisions and opening that up, making it simpler. What kind of a permit would it require, or does it require one?
It depends on the district, and if I, or the zone. I believe community gardens are pretty much allowed in virtually every zone. Market gardens, if I remember correctly, are allowed.
On page 15.
With a PS, allowed in manufacturing zones, allowed in commercial zones, require a PSP in office zones.
And why would it require that in an office zone? I would look at downshifting the level of permits on those, and, you know, where it does, maybe now, maybe where it's proposed to require any sort of a permit, maybe some of those could even be those affidavits. You know, this isn't agricultural zoning, this is agricultural use on other zone properties, and so there, these types of uses would not be protected by the state right to farm act, and so, you know, any issues with potential nuisance, I can't think of whatever issue there would be, except for flies or something. I mean, that can be dealt with on a property owner-to-property owner basis, so I think we're protected there. So I really think that maybe they shouldn't even require permits, or maybe an affidavit at the most. I would go for the lowest level requirement possible on those.
Commissioner Cappella.
Yeah, I think nuisance to be proven is going to have to be pretty significant. So if that's the only constraint, I'm fine. I think, you know, the more places we can have to grow food, not in your own backyard, which may not facilitate it, or multifamily in it, the more we can have locally grown, the better. As I saw, I was on a trip to Cuba, I mean, there are gardens, food gardens everywhere. I mean, that's really a supplement to the diet when you're under restrictions on how much beans and rice you can have per month. To get fresh vegetables, you pretty much have to grow it yourself. And I think it's a pleasant landscape to see as you're driving around. So unless there's an obvious nuisance or a problem, I'm fine with this, because it looks like it's pretty flexible. Thanks.
Commissioner Jordan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm happy to, you've got the, you took out the space, the square footage requirement, the consequences in there about pests or pesticides could be part of these standards. I agree with Commissioner Pujo on her phrase of downshifting the level of permits. I mean, if you could accomplish handing somebody out the standards and getting them to sign to that, then, you know, somebody in the neighborhood's going to complain, and if they're not meeting the standards, that's great. One thing you said way earlier, on the differentiation between these two markets, and that was that the second one, the smaller one, the market garden, is that the smaller one, the market garden?
Market garden would allow onsite sales.
Yep, so the other one, the community garden, you used the phrase that all the food there would have to be consumed by the growers. And I can tell you that I know one's in town right now, in the Mesa, where they actually grow to give away the food, so I just wanted to make sure that they didn't fall in there somewhere.
No, that was my, I misspoke.
Okay.
Yeah, right.
Because there are, they're not selling it, but they are growing it for a purpose, and I think that should be encouraged, too.
Right.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
If somebody grows squashes, they're probably going to have to give away.
Commissioner Lodge.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree that these uses should be encouraged, and down, it's not downsizing, but in any way, low, downshift.
Like that new one.
Yeah, on the degree of permitting, I would be fine with me, too. I did have a question about very last sentence on page 34, "pull behind equipment is prohibited." And what is referred to there?
So it's talking, that's really a tractor pulling a giant, you know, cultivator sort of tiller idea.
Oh, I see, okay, because I was thinking of somebody pulling a sprayer on wheels behind them.
No, not like, no, not like that. It really means a motorized, this is what we mean to mean.
Oh, okay.
Right, motorized vehicle pulling a cultivator, because, I mean, we want to put it in because we want to, we want to make sure that it's addressed, but with the plots, you know, I don't, I don't think it's going to be a big issue, but we just wanted to make sure that it was in there, just in case.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, would that also apply to oxen, or any other beast of burden?
When I, when I read the staff report, the sentence from the, from the general plan is, to me, is confusing, but it's explained where it says, "and encourage vol-" well, it says, "conduct an audit to determine if the city owns land that could be used for community gardens, and encourage voluntary private development of gardens." That sound, and what I gather it's meant to say is voluntary development of gardens on privately-owned land. Is that correct?
Yes, that'd be the proper interpretation.
This is the language that's in there. Okay, thank you. That's it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I agree with the concept and removing the size restriction. I don't think that we need to specify a maximum or minimum size. Again, I think it will be dependent upon what's available. If someone decides that they've got a, an available parcel that maybe is not going to be used anywhere else for several years, and they turn it into agricultural use or garden use, I think regardless of the size of the parcel, we should allow it. And you've covered the idea of dealing with things like pesticides and so forth. So the way you've got it drafted without the size restriction, I think is fine. So that's the list of your questions. Are there any other areas that staff would like us to comment on before we wrap this up?
I do, yes, please. So, I mean, do you like it?
I have one suggestion for a guy whose eyes are getting older, and that is that you use the entire piece of paper for the document, rather than just artfully increase those margins on the top, the bottom, and the side. So I can, I was tempted actually to run it through the machine and blow it up, but it would be easier to read for me.
Well, that allows for the comments on-
Yeah, it happens with track changes in the comments.
Maybe track changes.
Figure out a different way to do that for the next time.
Okay.
Mr. Commissioner Cappella.
Thank you. Yeah, you know, having been involved in the process from the start, I think it's really turning out to be a great usable tool, and hopefully the public feels the same way. I think talking about the purpose of why this particular zoning is being done is really helpful, to put it in perspective. I think the definition, the organization is great, the use is tabbedalized, and then the section's real good, too, is the definitions in the back. You know, you don't have to have the definition every time you see a requirement, you can refer back to it, and it's pretty clear breakdown of the differences between one and the other. So I think this is a great, at a great spot right now to move forward with your module two, and, you know, the two other modules that are coming up. But thank you for organizing it, and staff for working on it with you.
Commissioner Pujo, any comments?
Yes, thank you. I like it. I, I think it's going to be a little while for all of us to get used to the new nomenclature, that's to be sure, but, you know, we will eventually get there, and it'll become easy for us to translate from the old zoning to the new zoning, and then we'll start forgetting what the new zoning, the old zoning name was. So I think all that's fine, I like the combinations that you've come up with, and I particularly like the section on the use classifications, those descriptions, I think are really helpful and easy to find, and, and a really good, good improvement. So I would just like to basically, I imagine you might be closing with this anyway, a description of what's next, what's in store next for the committee. We had several speakers today here talking about the Sustainable Living Research Institute, and I'm sure that they would probably want to know, where do they actually plug into this kind of discussion with the committee, and what kind of timeframe we're looking at for that, and that sort of thing.
Anything else?
If there's no other comments, I, I don't know if you have anything you want to-
I just wanted to add that Martha's already begun on Module Two. We had a meeting earlier today. Staff will get together with the joint, Enzo Joint Committee to discuss the SLRI overlay and figure out where they do plug in. And we'll be bringing Module Two back to the Joint Committee in October, is our schedule. And the planning commission after that.
Yes, thank you. Question, as far as, starting with B, when she was involved, the documentation is just great on everything that's discussed. And I want to compliment you on that, too. All the discussions that we had and points we made individually were very well incorporated. So maybe the, when you go back and you do it by subject, our comments, which, however you're organizing it, that you also include the public comments, maybe even though it might be repetitive to us, it might be good with the, with the public thought themselves. I would appreciate that.
Mr. Chair, yes, we intend to type up all the comments, create a new document, add that to the website as a research document.
Thank you.
Okay, if there are no other comments, then the meeting's adjourned. Thank you.